Counsel, we need a month.
I'd like to leave to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and your mission, we're gonna read justice for all.
Okay. Hold on please.
Counselperson Sexton?
Here.
Orhan?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Yeah.
All right, give me a motion, someone to approve this agenda. Second, someone?
Seven.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, last question, did anyone oppose us?
Well, you should.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
After five.
The consent agenda. Um, consists of the approval of the minutes of October sixth, regular council meeting. Um, October fourteenth, special council meeting. Uh, the trick or treat hours. Um, a couple of fire department appointments and the claims for October twentieth. So move, thank you.
Second.
Trick or treat hours are five to eight. City hours, there's a hour that the Main Street West Branch is putting. Um, doing downtown, downtown stores are open, trick or treating, that's a Friday afternoon, right? Yeah. Wait, this says Thursday.
It is a break.
Okay, no problem. Um, a couple of cadets. Me, you and Christopho. Any questions, anybody? Harry Dunn, let's vote please.
Counselperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Orhan?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yeah.
Dean?
Yes.
Uh, presentation's open forum, we'd love to hear what you have to say, anyone can address us. Um, we can't make a decision. Well, we wanna hear what you have to say, Rob, do you wanna?
Yeah.
Like Copeland?
I brought pictures, I can share them on this, or I can email them to you guys later, I'll just, um, wanted to touch real quick on the construction going on at Cedar Johnson and surrender there. Uh, after, during presentations, Dave and I had a lot of conversations about what everything was gonna look like. We weren't necessarily made aware of how significantly our front yard was going to slip off there. Specifically on that west side and that southwest corner. Um, and, and from a child safety, you know, between the significant drop off, it's probably gone from what was a foot to a foot and a half over thirty feet, forty feet, it's now going to be three or four feet at least, drop down in twelve feet.
Yeah.
Um, and so, we would like to put in a retaining wall there, we have a quote for seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars plus tax. Um, knowing that that road is, is kind of the main source for a lot of outside income between weddings and golf course. We do feel like, um, it, it would really increase the value and provide a, a nice presentation for people coming from out of town, uh, visiting our town. Um, do you have anything else?
I feel like gonna be the utilities.
Yeah, and I know I'm working with, with MediaCom and Don, I'm trying to get that box lowered so that we are going to go ahead with, with the retaining wall. Um, but, but we would appreciate reimbursement either in full or some percentage, however we can work that out uh, in the future, so we'll bring that to your attention.
And we do have pictures of the change of what it used to look like versus what it's actually.
Jerry certainly knows.
You must drive by every day.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, you guys know where we're talking, these. You know what's on.
Yeah.
Um. Any? Percentage on say, what you, what you're looking for for reimbursement?
Again, as, as much as we could get, understanding that, that you guys have processes you have to go through if that, that involves bringing in your own contractor and finding out what it would cost to do it. Um, and, and providing that, whatever it is, we, we can work on it. Um, I'd say it's a negotiation at this point.
Yeah, my moment oughta move forward, he's got an estimate to do the work.
It's not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda, so you're not moving forward, we're just discussing.
Somebody wanted to do a retained wall on Ford Street, when we said no.
For that trash container thing?
No bank, for the hill.
Yeah, where?
That was between the sidewalk and this.
Stabs, yeah.
There's a little bit, this is from the sidewalk to his house. Um, my question would be is if it's more than three feet, it's gotta have a railing. I believe four feet.
I think it's four, fourteen, right?
Fourteen, forty-two inches.
A false wall, so.
Well, that's the tricky part, from the sidewalk, I believe on that southwest corner where we're trying to get MediaCom to drop that box down. We could keep it under, if, if it needs to be under forty-two inches, we can work, we can work with that, that's not a problem. But, there's certainly some areas where it would currently, as it resides right now with that box there, it would be closing in on four feet.
Yeah. Is MediaCom responding to us for?
They're trying to get back with us tomorrow probably, so, I can place a call. I'm interested, I've tried to push them gently, so.
The other thing that I would note is that the reason why we're asking for reimbursement is because we didn't realize how low the road was going to be, so we were not able to negotiate this in our original contract that we signed, which is why we're bringing it up now.
Got it.
And our original contract did state anything that wasn't stated in it, if there was material change, that there would not be a material change.
Significant structure change, I guess.
That's correct, and I would consider that as a significant change to our property.
Uh, okay, so you got a question for Dave, I guess? Well. Is this?
Well, you certainly won't have a basketball court anymore, will you?
That's to be determined, I have not replaced my parts.
They'll say driveway on Wednesday, so we'll find out then.
Find out what it looks like Wednesday afternoon.
The driveway gonna?
No.
Bring it up a little bit and it might be almost a flat.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming you discussed this with them and?
Yeah, there's a number of complications on that intersection, so the utilities are a private easement, which we can't force somebody relocate that's behind the right of way. So in that area, if it's not in the, the right of way, the city doesn't have the same control over the utilities as they do if they're in the right of way. Uh, it's been a little difficult in the prelocations there to get those boxes lowered, the lines are higher than we had anticipated. Next to grading, a little bit more difficult, so it's gotta be a little bit steeper in order to keep cover all the utilities, which is part of the reason for the surprise there initially, we were looking to spread that over, it'd be a lot gentler slope, but in order to try to keep those utilities up higher, or the city has to pay a pretty substantial cost for relocation on those, that's more important.
So MediaCom, not in the right of way?
They're not.
And why are they not in the right of way?
Most of those utilities and indoor development have a fifteen-foot utility that's behind the right of way, that's where the utilities will be. So, for anybody that follows them, they have a lower, you have to pay, and it's one of their expenses.
That's why they go. That's why the new developments always go out of there, that's what they deal with it.
If you drive up there, you can see there's an orange tube going on above the sidewalk, that's higher than.
It's down to the north too.
Yeah.
And it's right, I mean, it's only pretty damn close to the sidewalk.
Right, so they try to slope that to get up, that's a pretty steep slope to keep cover over top of that.
Yeah. So it's already seen the lower of their power too, because that's same issue.
So the box has utilities, it has two conduits that are going up into it, and it's a pretty large box, it has open area inside, so we can adjust that, lower it to get some of that grading done. Uh, and that's right on the corner of the wall, which is why we need to have some movement on that, and Don from MediaCom has indicated he could have something to do and work with us to try to do that, so the works below, uh, the elderly utilities, I'm interested, okay.
Are you wanting to go ahead and build this wall, and because it needs to get done?
Yeah, we would, we would like to move forward with it to, knowing that construction sounds like it will be done. Uh, it will be back to relatively normal, I guess you could say, driveway access. Um, again, with the regular driveway here, within the next couple of weeks, we would like to move forward with the, with the retaining wall.
Are you?
At this point, the only thing that's holding it up are the, the cables that we need lowered. Again, if we can get them lowered down six inches to a foot, the retaining wall, they won't have anything to do with the retaining wall.
Are you totally against grading your yard back, say twenty feet or so, to bring that down?
I think so, just because our backyard isn't that great, it's fairly well-sloped already, so our kids like to play out front quite often. Um, they, they utilize that space a lot, especially now that this, this speed limit is lowered down to twenty-five all the way through there. Um, yeah, they like to play out there quite a bit, so.
Um, I guess. They need to get that retaining wall as low as possible, so we don't have to, don't have to put a railing on it.
Mm-hmm.
Save a little money there.
Yeah. Yeah, I can work on that.
Forty-two or forty-eight, I can't.
Is he gonna get a permit?
Not if it's under forty-eight.
Yeah, it's below, then.
It's below forty-eight, I don't think it's.
Pretty sure. Yeah, I think you're right.
I didn't. Four rail. That's what's in my head, but that could be wrong. Okay, so, and I guess I would say we should go ahead and build it. We'll have to talk about it.
I would think we'd wanna discuss.
Talk about case before we give them.
He says he's gonna do it regardless.
Yeah.
So what I would say is that's recommend is for special, special meeting, discuss with the county on this before we start negotiating.
Do that Wednesday, if you want, I'm calling up, special meeting Wednesday, and you just have to.
Eighteen, Wednesday night.
Seven o'clock, we did.
I'll do it at seven, anyway, that's a whole nother issue, yeah. So we may have to have a special, that's fine, we can't talk about money and stuff like that.
No, understand, we can come back if needed.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Gosh, you enough to close session deal, wouldn't it, for us to?
Yeah, I'm gonna call another closed session meeting for another issue for the creep widening.
Good.
I was gonna do it Wednesday night, so, we'll talk about it at the end of the meeting. Anyone else, uh? Open forum. John, I think you're is it your subject up for discussion?
It's down at the bottom, essentially. Uh, it's a discussion, move to action, number nine.
Yeah.
So you got a few other items to add again?
Yeah, I'm gonna wait, wait till the end, John, you're, you're on the agenda. All right, let's move on, um. Third reading of ordinance, uh, eight fifty, eight thirty-two, many chapter fifty-five, animal protection control. We are eliminating the licensing. Move.
Done.
Thank you. Anybody, anything on this subject? You're none, let's go.
Counselperson Sexton?
Yes.
Uh, Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
No.
Stulman?
Yes.
Orhan?
Yes.
Sir, second, third?
I got a question while we're talking about that.
Go ahead.
So we've been changing a lot of ordinances here lately, when was our last codification? And do we have that planned anytime soon?
Yep, we do it every three months.
Right.
Um, and so we would have done it, uh, July, I think we sent it, sent it out.
Good.
The July first, so the next set went out, uh, just September.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Resolution twenty-five, one fourteen, amending the city of West Branch fee schedule. Motion, move. This is to remove the dog and cat and pet registration fees. Um, is this all of those, even though level three, level four fees? I assume?
If I remove it, I might probably have to remove all of it.
Yeah. Good, any questions? Let's go, please.
Counselperson Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Orhan?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Okay, um. Resolution twenty-five, one fifteen, approving the preliminary plat of Parkside Hills, part five.
Move.
Second.
We didn't get a map.
Yeah.
Didn't get a map.
That one, but I'll call it up, but. It's out this morning.
I forgot to bring that up. See, Thursday, I assume, or?
In the. The reason why, I guess John can explain a little bit more, or Dave, but the reason why there is less being drawn on here than other plats is because um, what is drawn and what we require is the public utilities be drawn in. So. That's why you don't see a hundred million things going.
It's a lot, it's a lot of stuff like that, with hard stranded service, yes.
Mine wasn't the map in the package, it wasn't the drawing and packing.
It was not put in the package, and it wasn't on purpose. Little staff error to that, we'll correct it.
Okay, so this is a private road. Water lines to feed. But I get a motion. It's, it's the same plan that we've been looking at, forget, it's, it's the same plan we've always been looking at. Anybody, anything? Nothing's changed, has it? Since P and Z approved it, and?
Yeah, everything's the same, that's the exact same layout, it has the wider radii, the intersections of the private drives that we've discussed throughout the process.
Wider street width?
Yep, so. Yeah, and Adam is correct, it is, uh, everything in years proposed is private, so it gets reviewed again as we go through each of the site plan processes, you'll see those private utilities, the private sanitary sewer, water mains, sewers, all such things as well.
Good. I mean, I didn't, man, we see it in, I, I saw this when I looked at this on Friday. I guess it was too late, then anyway, to get it in back of the site plan. I think it was Saturday, and then it'll go. Anybody, any comments, or we vote? Okay, let's go ahead and vote then.
Counselperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Orhan?
No.
Uh, Stulman?
No.
Dean?
Yes.
All right, final plat, same thing, resolution twenty-five sixteen, approve the final plat, this is just the legal description of, of the same. It's just the legal description of the same piece of property. Which I'm not going to try to correct. The motion, please.
Move.
Second.
Any comments? Go ahead and vote.
Counselperson Dean?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Orhan?
No.
Stulman?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, we have a first reading of ordinance eight thirty-three. Um. Providing that general property taxes levied and collected on certain lots in the Meadows. Um. Trying to handle the new. Be paid to special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced in indebtedness, including bonds issued or issued, or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with said West Branch urban renewal area.
Move.
Second.
Uh, we do this every time.
So this is, uh, three different areas here, we have the last lot in KLM, the part four A and part four B. We have the dental office lots, set the base value, and then we have the base value for, uh, the plat we just, uh, we just approved, so those are the three different areas where the base values are set, so that's what we're, that's what this ordinance does. Uh, like I said, this is the last, probably the fifth ordinance that included KLM's lot, so.
The final one for KLM?
Yes.
Probably?
Yes. Because we just did four A and four B, the arts, the rest of them, we didn't, we didn't do it.
This would be the final for the dental lot and for Set Hills also.
Yeah.
You wanna do it once?
Yep.
Sets the, uh, the base value?
Back to twenty-four, so you go back a year, so that it's, it's the value of the, like the dental office before it was built. So, that's how, that's how you set the value, so you wait till, wait till the year it's built and go back a year.
Okay. Makes sense.
So like on the car, uh, grounds, you would go back next year and, uh, since they built in twenty-five, you would go back to June, next year you pass the ordinance, go back to January first of twenty-five.
You can do that, we have to do that to take advantage of the.
Right.
The following from them. I get a motion.
Mm-hmm, so we do, do we do this on every phase? Or is it the whole?
So, so, um, so, uh, you talking about Parkside Hills?
Yeah.
Okay, so this one's a slum and white one, so it doesn't end, so like on KLM, it was a twenty-year TIF, so we did it periodically to get twenty years on every lot, this one you, we talked to bond counsel, they said just do the ordinance because it doesn't, it just catches the value right now, doesn't matter twenty years because the, uh, it doesn't end, so you don't have to worry about catching, catching the value as you're building. So this would, this would take care of the whole subdivision right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I, all right.
Yeah, so we did the same thing on Heritage Hill because that was a slum and white also, so we did one ordinance that collected the whole, the whole thing, so that's why we do, when we have a twenty-year like KLM, we do it as we go, so we can collect twenty years on each building.
Right, so each building, once it's built?
Yeah.
That's when you go back a year.
Yeah, yes, right, like, yeah, so this one's, it's different if you have a slum of life versus if you have a economic development area, which the other ones were.
Good question, Julie.
Any other questions? Let's vote, please, this is an ordinance, yes.
Um, counselperson Miller?
Yes.
Uh, Dean?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Orhan?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
All right, um, discussion of, uh, in a move to action of approval for Kevin to move forward, city attorney, for the municipal infraction of a piece of property on Main Street. Won't you explain to us and for the record what piece of property this is?
Yes, this is four eleven East Main. What it means is that a vine could be placed upon the homeowner because they have not fixed certain violations, the ones that I have listed are I guess you can re-hear it on chill, yeah, but there are pictures below of, this has been my main bringer and concern, out of everything that's been there is the safety of the front porch. There is no attached wings here, it looks like that there is no, nothing underneath here keeping it sturdy. Um. And then as I went around the place, there are looks like vehicles that haven't moved in like two or three years because the dirt is all the way up on the tire.
It's been well over ten years.
Okay. So, every like August, I would send a letter to the, to the property owner and, you know, I something would come up personally, and I'd give him an extension, and then something would come up personally, and I'd give him an extension, and then we'd kind of work with them a little bit, but it's been three, maybe four years now, and so I guess at this point I'm looking for council guidance on what you want me to do at this point, because progress hasn't, hasn't been made.
Right. Okay, um, Don, don't you say your piece, address this.
First of all, Adam's correct.
Say your name.
John Proler, um, I'm the owner of four eleven East Main Street, um, Adam, you're correct, it has been, um, quite some time, and I was taking your last, um, deadline seriously, but I did dislocate my shoulder a month ago, Roger witnessed me in my sling. Um. And I, I have, I did thirty years of building salvage, so I have, um, several storage uh, units, including this two-story garage in Iowa City that I'm clearing out. Um, that had some parts sort of buried in the back for this porch, which are now accessible, uh, I did get uh, delayed and slowed down by the shoulder, I was unable to work for a couple of weeks. Um, what I'm asking the council is to give me four weeks to get the porch um, structurally sound and inspected, I'm gonna make it a four-season porch, so it can be done in two phases and have it inspected. Um. Roger, you're, you know, I would invite you to come out and, and check it out, and, and.
I'm not touching it, John.
See what you think of it, um, as far as the vehicles, you're right about that too. Um, could I have a further, um, four weeks after the porch to get the, um, I'm planning to either get rid of a couple of those vehicles and pull one of them inside the garage. Um, that's the plan.
What happened the last four years?
Um, I did go through a divorce, um, and I just, that house fell to the bottom of, uh, my list, my to-do list, it was pretty much what happened.
We heard these promises before, John.
Yeah. We've. So what I'm asking the council for is four weeks to, to get the, uh, the porch together and inspected.
Okay, what's, so what's a municipal infraction, what details and what's the timeline?
So, counsel, obviously, if you wanna give four weeks, it's four weeks. By filing municipal infraction, I can enter an agreement with Mr. Proler, it says you have it done by X date, we'll dismiss the site, I don't wanna find, I want the property cleaned up, and I want the, then, we can do it that way, and then the court enforces it. So then that way, if he doesn't, if he doesn't fix it, the court can order that either he gets it done, or we can, we can go on their property, take the cars away, fix the property and assess it back to the property, uh, property, so I guess it's either, I mean, that's another way to do it, is if I file one and make an agreement with Mr. Proler, it gives him X number of days that the court approves as a settlement agreement, and then that way, if it doesn't get done, I just go, we just go to court and.
But then we have, we got nothing, we, we have a band-aided.
Here, here's my, here's my, what, what's your suggestion, we're gonna have to do the infraction anyway, right?
Ultimately, yeah.
Ultimately, it'd be a lot nicer if he does. So, we've, we've waited three years, eight weeks isn't gonna kill us to give him the opportunity to do it, then, then we've went above and beyond.
My first impression was, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I, I agree.
And so I just counted the weeks, eight weeks puts us five days before Christmas, well, that ain't no fun. So, let's just say you got till January first, twenty twenty-six, to get her ever have spelled out what we want done?
We need to spell out what we wanna see, because it, you know, you move the truck, or you move it, oh, well, I did something. Or you put a post to hold that porch up, oh, well, I fixed it, that's not a solution.
I, I say four weeks.
I, I say four weeks for it all.
I would say four weeks, too. You start getting into December, you're gonna have problems with snow, freeze, and you're gonna have a hard time getting the vehicles out of the dirt and that kind of stuff. Um. I won't go with like Kevin's suggestion, uh, and I'd recommend four weeks.
Okay, what are we gonna see and what do we wanna see in four weeks?
Yeah. I want something infraction.
Everything is on that infraction.
Yeah, we're gonna make a list of infracts.
Uh, there's a list on Adam's thing here, and I would put on the infraction every, every item that's on there, so that the court.
So for you, John. Take the porch off. It doesn't need to be there. That's one infraction gone. But we're trying it anytime.
If I'm unable to get it done, I would, I did consider that, but I do have all the materials for it and, and I'm a carpenter, I can get this done.
Well, when you get to that point, you're gonna have to get a permit. You don't have to have a permit to take the porch off of the house.
No, I do have a permit to, to, to rebuild the porch. And I've had one or two inspections so far. And so the deck is well-built and was inspected. The deck is in there, it's good. It's got exterior micro lamps on the outside and. It's nicely reinforced.
Yeah.
My decision's four weeks.
Yeah, okay, I'm four weeks. What's a compromise?
So four weeks and then I file and.
Yeah.
That, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He needs, we need clear, defined solution of what we're gonna see in four weeks. I don't want him to move the truck and say, oh, well, I did something. Or kind of put it half in the garage? It's half out? That's not a solution either.
I mean, the garage is thirteen and a half by thirty, so I can get.
It's full of stuff, John, you gotta.
I've got a lot of it cleared out.
You have to do everything that's under our junk vehicle classification. So there's a number of things, has to be working, can't have flat tires, can't have broken windshields, has to be licensed. So. It's already tailored out for you guys in terms of, it's just.
We have it in our.
Okay.
Okay.
I, my, here's my question, though, is. I mean, I read this list of stuff. What about all the overgrowth and vegetation and stuff?
Yeah, that's a whole nother infraction also.
It's not even listed, though.
Yeah, it's under fifty point oh two ten. Weeds, brush, grass over six inches, obnoxious, unsightly weeds and dense growth. So that needs to be removed also. Alright, bye.
They're a lot worse there.
What we mean.
I've been driving by this thing for my.
Ten years, fifteen years, so.
Alright, okay, I have my direction, I don't. I won't, I won't come back, I'll file it.
Yep, yeah, that's right. Well, so. A month from today?
A month from today. And if there's a council meeting right before that, I can come with pictures and report on it if you guys would like.
We can all drive by. Wouldn't get it.
Okay, let's move on.
Thank you for your consideration.
Um, Adam, city administrator, anything?
Yes, Friday through Thursday, I will be in Tampa for the National ICMA Conference. When I get back, it's gonna be report season once November starts, so that's your urban annual reports, your TIF reports. Um, the budget report will come out mid-November for, uh. Everyone, including department heads and city, um, and city staff, and then lastly. Uh, University of Iowa's, obviously, they're, they're helping us, but I do wanna shout out that Jesse Simon has been doing a good job working with one of those groups. Um, that she's kind of taken in under her wing. Um, I'm still watching over it. But she is taking a lot off my plate by, by doing that. So I just wanna thank Jesse Simon for that.
Alright. Thank you. Um. Nothing else? Hey?
Just a few updates, um, Cedar Johnson Road, most of the pavements in, they're working on driveways, but they'll be on yours here shortly. Have a little bit of sidewalk to do, yeah, the short section trail, and then, uh, it'll be backfilling and finish grading and that be ready to, uh, get the seat put down, so project's moving along pretty well. Uh, the creek widening project, they cleared on the downstream part, um, everything, uh, south of the railroad. And, uh, they are working on the north side of the creek over by Barn March property. Uh, they've excavated most of the area for the new channel. They've taken that material, it was all good enough to use for that fill that we were afraid to place on Bruce's, so they got that pad built up. Uh, soon they'll put the culverts in the creek for temporary crossing and start filling the material on the, the south part, and they'll come up on Main Street, turn out, go out of town. Uh, so. Head back on Parkside once out. So they'll go across the interstate, out there, wastewater plants on, uh, agricultural property out there privately. So you'll see a lot of, uh, activity here shortly, a lot of, uh, traffic going on Main Street hauling dirt. Uh, but everything is going pretty well on that project so far, uh, had we communication with property owners. And, uh. Making good progress. So, uh, the only other thing I have to report on is tomorrow, we have another meeting with the University of Iowa student group that's working on the sewer study, so I'll have more of an update after we meet with them. Uh, the previous meeting was just to kind of get them started on, uh, structuring their report, going through the information that we had, making sure they understood that, and getting them. Moving in the right direction, so. We'll see how things look tomorrow and the next meeting, I'll let you know.
What's all that stormwater pipe down in the barns? Is that for their crossing?
The concrete pipe? The concrete pipe is for storm sewer, so we are, by putting that fill in there, trying to take the water from the north side back down the creek, so there's a pretty long section of pipe that has to do that. Uh, it's between the old railroad and bank, but that pad that we built, so that'll get filled in.
Okay. Well, wait.
Yeah, anyone? No? Alright, mayor and council, I, uh, we met, me, Dave and Adam, met with a landowner. For the Creekside Widening, he. Didn't wanna sign the easement agreement. Um. We convinced him to. To sign it. And it's gonna get paid a little bit, it's, it's the same. A couple of others are getting paid.
For good as land just kept getting flooded.
Yeah.
Andrew.
Anyways, he's due the, the money. That he's owed for that, for signing that agreement, the easement agreement. However. He claims that he. The property in front of the, his building is, is. And. We can't really argue that it's not his. So it needs to be cleaned up. There's an outlot, it's about four or five hundred feet long. From Second Street all the way to Bronnic Park. Twenty-four feet wide. That's never been. It's never been cleaned up. So he, he kind of demanded, he did demand that. In return for him signing this easement agreement for the creek, that we. Clean that up.
And pay him?
A little bit. A little bit. So I wanna have a special meeting on Wednesday?
Not Wednesday.
To talk about it. I want to do it tomorrow night?
It's gonna be fine.
It's good, it's good twenty-four hours, at least. Yeah, okay. What? One of all, Winston? You may not have to be here. Anybody else here Wednesday? Dolphin? We already got them, well. You're done by seven, it's dark.
Yeah. That's why I say I could do it at seven.
Seven P M? Wednesday? So I'd like to talk about. That piece of property on, uh, Bronnic Drive. No, yeah, Bronnic Drive. And we'll talk about. The Brooklyn Wall. Two different subjects, is that two different meetings?
Yeah, could need two different meetings.
Close one and go.
Yeah, no. Yeah, you can, you can't talk about the wall in private, you gotta talk about that in public. You can talk about a property acquisition or litigation issue in a, uh. A closed session.
Yeah, he's got two things going on, we hope to be two separate meetings.
Oh, okay.
If we're gonna talk about dollar amount for the open wall, we need to.
Okay.
Do it in private. That makes sense? So that'll be a close, we'll go into closed session on Wednesday at seven P M. Anybody, anything else before we adjourn?
Main Street. Corner of Downey, oh, the corner of Downey and Main. Whenever we fixing the light, there is a. A lion, or who's fixing the streetlights? There's two of them that are, are being out.
City streetlights?
Yeah. They've been out for a long time.
The bulbs are burned out? Or they've been broken off?
They're out. I don't know.
On top of the big poles or the ones that, the little ones that are in front of shops?
There were little ones in front, there're shorter ones in front of the shop, hard poles.
I can explain at least one of them. I don't know of the second one, but one of them, the city crew did fix it. Um, two days later. Somebody backed into it. And broke. Some of the parts and the box to it, so we have to refix it. I will give you an update, Yogi, on when public works plans on refixing them.
It's just really dark. It's a bad spot to be dark. It's been that way for a while.
Anything else? Motion to. All in favor, say aye.